It is nine fifty-five on January twenty-third and we are returning to our regularly scheduled business meeting. There was a motion and a second on the floor to amend the order of agenda, striking all of the B O C C items. Roll call vote.
The definition of business means business that relates directly to a person's work function and benefits the county based on the legal definition.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with the vote.
I vote no.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. I will now step down from the chair and move to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. The next item on the order of agenda is the consent agenda and the expenditures over five K today are rebuilding and hard facing incorporated and for greater bits, fifty thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars for Roden Bridge. And for the sheriff, it is the Ilets, which is the quarterly access user fee.
How much?
Eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars fifty cents.
Mr. Chairman, based on information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the mo— I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. The next agendized item is Clerk Rosedale.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Commissioners. I have four things for you today. The first one is the fiscal year twenty-four claims batch number eight in the amount of seven hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred ninety dollars and eighty-nine cents and demand batch number eight in the amount of eight thousand two dollars—I'm sorry, eight hundred and two thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, totaling one million five hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents for your approval. Did I just mess this up? I didn't. Good.
Is there anything of note to bring forward in regard to any of these amounts before I ask my question for you of you, Mr. Rosedale?
On the claims, Mr. Patterson's gonna—uh, the demands, excuse me, it's a big demand. We have twenty-seven thousand dollars in Roden Bridge fuel. We've got two hundred and twenty-seven thousand in medical payments. We have fifty thousand for a Chevy Silverado that was purchased, seventeen thousand for, um, looks like continuing edu—uh, no, I'm sorry, fuel charges also. We have fifty-two thousand for an airport truck and three hundred and fifty-three thousand for the solid waste loan.
Clerk Rosedale, I don't see the bill for Ida Bailey that was generated by the prosecutor's office. I had sent an email asking that that be put in for payment as it was not generated by the fair but by the prosecutor. Am I—is it supposed to be somewhere in here and I'm missing it? I thought—I went line by line and I couldn't find it.
I don't know if you asked—you didn't ask me to put it in. Are you talking about what we went through the other week?
Yeah, I did email and asked the Ida Bailey be put in.
On the demands?
I asked for both directions because I wasn't sure. When I talked to Jessica—
Yeah, I can check for that.
What happened was, um, the dollar amount of the bill is below five thousand. It wasn't brought on by the fair. They didn't vote to do anything. The prosecutor was addressing an issue and they caused the bill to be created. And so the bill went before this board and the board made a decision, but then there was an email exchange explaining that this was generated by the prosecutor's office. So I sent a request to put the bill in for payment. She made mention of the demands and that's where we had kind of the—you wanted two commissioners to vote and I asked you why that was the standard for a bill below five. And then it was kind of a misunderstanding—
Sure.
—of on my part, but that bill needs to be paid and to be reviewed for payment. It was generated by the prosecutor's office, not the fair. So can you explain that?
Sure, I can. So when we do demands, demands are when I actually issue a check under my office before the Board of Commissioners gets to vote on it. The only—only place that can actually pay bills are the Board of County Commissioners. If I issue a demand, knowing that the board will not approve it, my office can be personally held liable for that payment. I had noticed that there was a problem with this, that two of you may not approve that bill, so I can't do a demand. I'd be usurping the power of the board. That's why it was not a demand.
But what about the claims batch?
The claims batch—it was made out to the—right, to the—that one was made out, I believe, to the fair and they wanted the county to pay that. So there is a dis—there is a discrepancy of where to do it. The claim came into the fair, so it could have been paid by the fair. But switch—if it was due—if it was something incurred by the fair and then asking the county to pay for it, that could be the problem. That's why it's best settled by you. As far as the five thousand—
On the claims, though, because the prosecutor's office clarified that they generated the bill itself, but the person who billed used the fair in that, and so I asked for it to go in the claims.
So I did not hear—you asked it to go in the claims. I mean, maybe it was in the email, but I know that when it was going back and forth, there were three ways to do it. There is a demand, which I will not do because I already know the board's gonna say no to that. Therefore, I would be acting in bad faith if I actually paid with the demand. There's the claims route or the—the regular claims route, excuse me, and that should go be paid for by the fair, uh, which they handled those bills, not the county. If it was paid by a credit card, that bypasses me because it's under the five thousand limit. This is a—a legal sticky wicket that—that I'm not the guy to talk to about this. Louis knows about this, uh, the Commissioners know about it, the bill knows about this. This is just a—a unwinnable position.
But in this—
I'm not gonna do a demand, is all I'm saying.
Okay, but on the claims, the bill was generated by the prosecutor's office for the fair.
I know there's other bills generated by the prosecutor's office up to bat here, but that one for the fair?
That—that's what the email exchanges. Louis Marshall weighed in and explained his office generated the bill for the fair and so that it should be paid by the county. And so that's where I'm not understanding why we didn't include that one. So if we could—
As I've—as I said before, Commissioner Williams, when you have a—a question like this, it's best to do this before the meeting when we can actually look at the file and look at the re—and all that.
We did, though.
And I can actually—I didn't talk to you yesterday.
No, we emailed about this bill—
Last week sometime.
Yeah, yeah, with Louis Marshall weighing in, saying his office generated the bill.
Right. I don't ever remember coming in as a claim, though. That was never just—I don't remember that being determined. That's how they wanted to do it.
Okay.
Clerk Rosedale, on page thirteen, there is another Ida Bailey bill for Justice—uh, Justice Civil Lit, and it is for legal. And what I am curious about—I did email, uh, your office and I did ask about it, and my understanding is that this was for some type of forensic audit. And I'm exceedingly confused as to what type of forensic audit might be conducted or how that would be done since, first off, the board has specifically stated—not for payment of Ida Bailey, but I did check with the invoices and this was wrong, uh, and any audit shall be made by and under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners as required in section sixty-seven dash four fifty B Idaho Code. And I'd like to know if there's been an engagement letter that we could look at so that I could better understand what and who is hiring a auditing firm, because I find that to be bizarre in that there has been much conversation on this board in regards to a forensic audit. And it appears that the prosecutor has hired people for a forensic audit in some cases, but it was not hired for the fairgrounds. So I'm just exceedingly confused and I was hoping that you could maybe shed some light on what is going on.
Commissioner Ramat, I would, uh, say the same thing to you that I said to Commissioner Williams. This is something that I—this is something best asked and gotten before the meeting. I don't know what the prosecutor is doing with the contracts. Ida Bailey is an accounting firm, it's not a legal. All the legal bills normally go through legal review. This is not a legal bill and so it was—it hit the claims, the normal protocol. As far as contracts, I—I have no idea what contract he may or may not have had with the prosecutor's office.
My item twenty-one actually was regarding investigative of the fair report. I think that, given the questions that you're asking, that we could consider placing that back on the agenda to discuss that. I don't think that it's a question about the bill itself, but the investigative report that was commissioned by the prosecutor's office.
The order of the agenda has been adopted and I will step down from the chair and move to approve payment of the fiscal year twenty-four claims and demands in batch minus the Ida Bailey bill of thirty-six hundred dollars, so it would be for one million—or twenty-six hundred five hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I think that this board exercising control over the prosecutor's elected office for bills that they generated is not appropriate. This is specifically looking for Ida Bailey bills, which is something that came up by this board earlier. The prosecutor's office generates bills that we should reasonably pay and as we identify what Bonner County business is, it's for the county. Delaying payment to a service provider for a service that they did in fact give Bonner County is not something that we should hold up due to politics. If there's an issue or concern with how the prosecutor manages their budget or requests third-party input, that should be taken up as a separate issue, not by way of holding up Ida Bailey bills. This will be the second bill that Bonner County Commissioners would be holding back payment, which negatively impacts us. We don't have that many auditors in Bonner County area. It's negative to do this to a company and think that if you eventually need another auditor that they would quote you a benefit. It's not—it's not good business. They gave the service and they're due their payment. Let's address the politics of the prosecutor's office independent of making them whole through their payment and potentially incurring interest fees associated with non-payment of funds. So my vote is to not—to not—I wouldn't want—
We're still in discussion.
And I was simply making it known that I don't support the idea of not paying Ida Bailey.
So the—the bill was incurred under good faith by Ida Bailey. He was hired by Bonner County. He is the prosecutor or whoever. The work was performed. Uh, I think he should be paid. I'll withdraw my second on the original motion—
Slip the motion die.
—for the reason that it was under five thousand, does not require prior approval. However, it was auditing, which should have required a discussion beforehand, but it did not. But I think in the meantime, Mr. Bailey needs to get paid and then we'll hash it out with the prosecutor.
There is a motion, a second on the floor. Is what I'm hearing, am I to understand then that you would like to amend the motion to pay the entire batch?
Pay the entire batch.
Could you put that on the floor and see if there's a second?
It would—it would be a cleaner since you already did a first and a—
So just a vote?
—to a first and a second and vote and let your issue die and then—
Well, I already withdrew my second, so.
I don't—you can't withdraw a second.
Can't withdraw with the second. And before we do that, I would like to continue the discussion in this regard. It is—
I called a question.
And the chair does not accept that. The—
Which is his right.
So in regards to this bill, auditing is exactly the job and approving bills, that is exactly the job of a county commissioner. It is the job of every elected official to make sure that every dollar in their care is being spent appropriately because they are not our dollars. It is not political and it is the spending authority, according to statute. It is statutory for a county commissioner to make a decision about what bills get paid. And statute is also clear in regards to audits. There is zero question. My questions remain, but I will honor the will of the board whether I am voted up or down because that is how it works. Is there any further discussion?
Can we ask questions?
No, you may not. So we are now voting on the amended motion to strike the Ida Bailey bill and then if it fails, we will look for another motion to pass the entirety of the bills. Roll call vote.
No.
Yes?
No.
The motion dies.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-four claims and demands in batch number eight totaling one million five hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next, I have fiscal year twenty-four EMS batch number eight in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents for your approval.
Is there anything of note that you would like to bring to the board's attention?
No.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-four EMS claims and demands in batch number eight totaling thirty thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next thing I have, every January of the even election years for the political—the—the partisan cycle, uh, we have to affirm both the Commissioner districts and our voting precincts. Um, and the first thing I have before you is the Commissioner districts for twenty-four. There's no change. The actual breakdown of the populace, the voting, uh, registered voters, is even tighter than it was last time. District one has ten thousand nine hundred eighty-seven registered voters. District two has ten thousand eight seventy-six and district three has ten thousand three nineteen, and that works out to district one having thirty-four point one percent, district two having thirty-three point eight, and district three having thirty-two point one. And that's as tight as we can get it, so that would be, uh, set until we adjust it next time for your approval.
For the members of the public, there were maps attached that are somewhat small. I have two larger ones. Unfirmed the public, if they were to go to your—is there a place where they can see this online or—
They can go to the election site. G I S is the best place to see that where you have the overlays, the G I S interactive map, and you can click on different districts or that kind of thing.
And that would also probably be the best place for—if members of the public had questions in regards to this, or should they go straight to your office, Clerk Rosedale?
Uh, they can go to my office, but probably the, uh, G I S has the maps and they can find exactly, like, if you're on this side of the street, that side of the street kind of a thing.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, based on information before us, I move to approve the resolution establishing the Commissioner districts, which will keep them as they are currently.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Next, I have, uh, the election precincts. We have to do those as well. There are no changes to the existing precincts, um, so this is adopting the current precincts for this election cycle as well and until we change it in the future.
All right. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the resolution establishing the election precinct as described above, number twenty-four dash twelve.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next items on the agenda are emergency management, and I believe it'll be Mr. Cameron LaCombe today for Bob Howard.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you, I have today, uh, this is regarding our all hazards mitigation grant contract. Bonner County was awarded the twenty-twenty-three All Hazards Mitigation Grant, award number two-two-three November, Oscar November Echo zero-one-seven, from the Idaho Office of Emergency Management in the amount of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and eight cents with an in-kind match of four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and twelve cents, or a total award of forty-three thousand two hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents. The in-kind match would be accomplished through community meetings and agency collaboration. These funds are for hiring a contractor to update our expired all hazard mitigation plan from twenty-seventeen. We have identified a contractor and are requesting authorization to enter contract with Integrated Solutions Consulting, Incorporated, for the purpose of updating and completing the Bonner County All Hazard Mitigation Plan with the funding from the All Hazards Mitigation Grant, and this was approved by legal.
Based on the information provided, I make a motion to approve the contract with Integrated Solutions Consulting, Inc., for the purpose of completing the Bonner County All Hazard Mitigation Plan with the grant funding provided by Idaho Office of Emergency Management in the amount of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and eight cents.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agendized item is with H R and Mr. Kevin Rothenberger.
Good morning, Kevin Rothenberger, Human Resources. Commissioner, before you is a request for approval for the rewrite of policy two-five-zero-zero tuition reimbursement, as discussed in the workshop held on January fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Major changes in the policy include process change from a pre-approval to a post-approval to eliminate the dual pre- and post-application and changing the application from a four-page to a one-page transmittal.
I will step down from the chair and move to approve the change to policy twenty-five-hundred tuition reimbursement.
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners?
For me, I think that this is a good start, but I think there's more that can, um, positively impact, uh, and I don't agree with the—and I can't remember if in here is it saying that part-time is eligible for that benefit?
All benefit eligible employees, yes.
Because this is a significant pull, um, to encourage specifically benefiting Bonner County and one of the—I've been doing some comparisons of other types of tuition reimbursements and I think that there's a better option to ensure that we get people to, uh, the end of their goal versus the way this one is written, as well as, um, there is a difference in—a lot of these policies of tuition reimbursement are for full-time staff, not part-time staff, to address the fact that there are limited funds, limited resources, and what essentially you're taking out of the county budget is investing in an individual that has a long run that will benefit the county as a whole, because then you're minimizing. And one of the areas that I see that can be negatively impacted by not having a stronger tuition reimbursement is our, uh, infrastructure services like EMS and law enforcement. They're required to do education and training and that's what we need, but what we're doing is we're approving class by class versus some actually will approve an individual for their program and that the person is known that they're going to receive that funding. But the way we're doing it, you may not receive funding, so that—that can draw some questions as if people can't actually invest in what the infrastructure is of Bonner County. That—that was my concern on—on this. I also—on this one, I wonder also in terms of community, I had some questions as to, um, a lot of programs, as with EMS, lowest grade is a B. This—this policy is lowest grade is a C, and it isn't because someone doesn't pass a class with a C. What you're asking for is to take funds from the county and it increases—the higher expectation increases the commitment sometimes to the program itself, and so, um, for those reasons, I will—I thought that there was room to improve this, um, because you don't want—if you have—we don't have an infinite amount of funds and it's restricted to what's available. And I think we're spreading ourselves too thin with, uh, this particular presentation.
For myself, I think that this is a great improvement about where we started. This is a relatively new program to Bonner County and investing in our workforce is incredibly important. And I value both the full-time and the part-time employees because they contribute and there are a variety of factors that provide some people, such as being a young mother or certain disabilities, where some people are not able to work, uh, full-time hours. There are a number of tuition reimbursement across public service, and this is a good one for Bonner County. It would not be a bad thing if we have so many of our employees that provide their statutory services to the county to utilize this fund and to come back to this board and say, "We have improved our skill, our capacity, our ability to better serve the residents of Bonner County." We are required to actually have a education, uh, collection, and I'm not certain of the exact—I think it's from alcohol and tobacco, sort of a syntax that use—that the county has to pay for our residents to be able to attend N I C. There's five counties, but only Cootney County gets that particular subsidy. I am one hundred percent in support of improving the capacity and ability of our services to provide to the residents of Bonner County, and I just want to say, "Thank you, Kevin." We had a good, robust workshop. There was some disagreement, there was some compromise, and I understand there will be changes, but this iteration is a significant improvement of what it started out.
Thank you. Good job.
Is there any further discussion?
I think the board should consider the issues that I stated. It's not—it's not about picking which group of employees, uh, that one likes over one. It's a limited amount of resources within the county and how do we—when we take a resource of—that comes from the public and we're gonna put it in a particular section, we need to justify why we're doing that and that we're being responsible with that funding. So for example, when you take programs that take a year to complete, the decision of whether or not, for example, EMS is going to take on that additional course is not dependent on class by class, it's the full program. So the better way to positively impact is to say, "Asia, you want to advance in this piece of infrastructure of Bonner County, we're going to cover you, um, in the tuition reimbursement program as a whole." And then the county would set aside funds for the annual cost of that. And then if my grade falls below what is required, then I'm no longer in the program and then that full amount is available to someone else. What we're doing is we're doing it in a class by class, so then the individual can't make a long-term commitment to a program because you don't know whether there are going to be resources available. And when you open the program up to include a lot of kind of the outliers, it isn't that you don't value that employee, it's that you're encouraging more to funnel into the county because you're giving the county—everybody pays into the county. You're giving our money away, so it's where is your better investment? county, you're giving our money away, so it's where is your better investment? Just like you identify there are reasons people can't work full-time, so in terms of the overall investment in the county, investing in a permanent full-time employee provides a greater benefit than a part-time employee. It's not a, that's just, it's a fact. It isn't, it isn't a, an opinion. And so, how do we accomplish that if we lower the grade requirement and open it up to all employees versus potentially encouraging a part-time employee to say, look, I want to work full-time because I have this goal? It isn't about, it's about what we're getting for the cost, because we're taken away from road repair or some other section to do a program that's beneficial to the individual, but the, the portion is supposed to be beneficial to the county as a whole. And so, being able to guarantee an EMT that their program as the full year is covered lest they drop, drop below the grade is more beneficial to the county than someone that is always going to be looking for something else, because if I can't get guaranteed, then I'm going to look for a company that is going to guarantee me. And that's where we don't want, we don't want people constantly looking for someone else to work. We want them to know they can count on Bonner County's program. That's what, what my thought is.
There is no giveaway in this program, and I take, I take umbrage at that, and I also will tell you that all employees of Bonner County are valued full-time and part-time, and there are life circumstances that do occur where sometimes people are unable to work full-time, and I will not demean the contribution that they offer to the citizens and taxpayer of Bonner County. This is not a giveaway. This is an investment in paying for the services that are statutorily obligated, and they are valued.
Could you consider that, what you just explained is, comes from a very negative spot? I'm not speaking, saying someone's not valued, but you're trying to pit an appeal to emotion versus an objective thing that I'm bringing forward. So, there is nothing about what I said that says someone isn't as valued, and it is, you are, we are as a board, giving tax money for a program.
Commissioner Williams, the motion on the floor is not about that, it's about making a motion to approve the change to policy twenty-five-hundred tuition reimbursement.
And this is the discussion.
And the standing rules, the discussion has passed. You've spoken twice, I've spoken twice. Is there anything left? Do you have anything left to add?
Yeah, yeah. Major portion of our road and bridge employees, maybe as high as half of them, started out as part-time employees, and through this education thing, they were able to get on full-time. So, yeah, it's something that works, and it was all discussed in the workshop, and we're being redundant.
Roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rothenberger. Thank you. Our next agendized item is the airport, and Director Shuck emailed us and said that he was ill today, so you can find these in the packet, but I will be reading them. Full disclosure, I am not the airport director, so if necessary, we may have to, if there are additional questions, I would table them, I'm looking online, see if Dave is, I don't see Dave. All right, so.
We're babble-ish.
Excuse me.
Oh, I got one, Dave.
Oh. To commissioners, lease assignment of Lot seven, this is airport item number one. The then-current lessee of Lot seven at Priest River Airport wishes to assign the lease to another party as allowed by the lease terms. All other lease terms, conditions, requirements, and obligations remain in force. Dave recommends approving this assignment, and it has been reviewed by legal.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve this lease assignment for Lot seven at Priest River Airport, and that the chairman sign administratively.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this agendized item? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 The second airport item is a DBT contract for maintenance services for navigational aids at Sandpoint Airport. It has been reviewed by legal. We have before you the renewal of our maintenance contract with DBT for the navigational aids at Sandpoint Airport. The contract is for one year from January first to December thirty-first. FAA regulations require a maintenance program for our ground-based navigation aid, which include the localizer distance measuring equipment, automated weather observation system, and non-directional radio beacon. The contract is in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and is accounted for in the airport's budget. I recommend entering into this maintenance agreement.
Based on the information before us, I move that the county enter in the maintenance agreement, and that the chairman sign administratively. This was reviewed by legal.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this agendized item? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Our next airport item is an FAA grant reduction for AIP number three dash one-six dash zero-zero-five-eight dash zero-one-two dash two-zero-two-one at Priest River Airport. Bonner County is requesting a grant amendment to the AIP three dash six, the AIP ending in twenty-twenty-one grant. This request to amend the grant description from conduct environmental study to conduct environmental study phase one. The remainder of the project conduct environmental study will be completed after additional planning is accomplished at the airport. The grant amendment request also reduces the grant amount to reflect the actual amount necessary for the project. The original grant amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars is reduced by one hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars for an amended total grant amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand twenty-one dollars on AIP zero-twelve. I recommend requesting this amendment.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county requests this changing the description of the grant and requested grant amount, and that the chairman sign administratively.
I second the motion, and legal did approve that amendment.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 The motion carries. Our next agendized item is with Bonner County Sheriff. I believe it's Lieutenant McGeechy, are you available?
Yes, sir, Lieutenant McGeechy, for the record, good morning.
Go ahead, please, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir. So, this morning I bring before you a request to approve an application for a Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Waterways Improvement Fund grant. The grant is offered every year to allow government agencies to be able to improve infrastructure, safety, security, search and rescue capabilities throughout the state. There's about one point two million dollars available in the fund. This year, we're seeking a grant to repower our Marine four patrol vessel at the sheriff's office. The patrol vessel's nearly thirty-four years old. The current engines and service on it are over sixteen years old, nearing seventeen years, and have over four thousand hours on each motor, and so, that causes us some reliability issues, the, the life cycle for motors, we've, we've said, have been running for many, many years now at about four thousand hours. This is actually a third application for this grant, and estimates for the, the grant are running about sixty-two thousand dollars. So, we're proposing a request for a thirty-seven thousand dollar grant with a twenty-five thousand dollar match from RBS funds to show our commitment to the project. So, I request approval of the application, and for the chairman to sign the letter of commitment for those funds.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the IDPR with grant application in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars with a county match of twenty-five thousand, and authorize the chairman to sign the letter of commitment.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. We'll move pretty quick into that, my only quick. Lieutenant McGeechy, I see that there's account zero-three-four-seven-nine-nine thousand. I'm hoping the answer is yes. Do you guys already have the funds in your budget for this twenty-five K?
So, the funds would have to be budgeted in the next fiscal year using RBS grant funds that we receive every year. We received a hundred and five thousand eight hundred and one dollars in RBS funds in the last fiscal year, and this fiscal year, we're currently projected, they're not finalized numbers, but we're projected to receive a hundred and six thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, so that propose those funds are budgeted in the next fiscal year using that, that money.
That match. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. I have no further. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
The motion carries. Thank you, Lieutenant. Our next item is from the Board of Community Guardians with Ms. Veronica Dixon.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Veronica Dixon, for the record. I'm presenting a resolution to remove Tammy Fain from the Board of Guardians. She has resigned her position after thirteen years on the board. Eleven of those years, she served as chairman. We thank her for her dedication and service to the board and our community. This resolution is for the BOCC to formally recognize her service and to accept her resignation.
All right. Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-four dash one-three, recognizing Tammy Fain's dedication and service to the Bonner County community and to accept her resignation from Bonner County Board of Community and Guardians.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Do we give like a gift or something to her?
We've not done that in the past, no.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
The motion carries. The next agendized item is public comment. Could you hand me the, and we will be starting with online people first today, and I should, I will bring to the general public's attention that we do have a scheduled executive session at eleven AM. Is there any member of the public that would like to give public comment? Online. So, state your name for the record, and for the, all the people that are out there online, we're going to do the online people first, and once it's going once, twice, and sold, then we're going to go to the people that are in the room. Mr. Brandon Kramer.
Yeah, good morning, Brandon Kramer, for the record. I have two, two issues that I'd like to raise today. One is in regard to rule number twelve that was passed earlier this morning. I had emailed all three of you commissioners, and specifically Chairman Omott, raising oversight and omissions in regards to that rule specifically, as to what the, the content of the forms would look like and how that process would actually work. And the only thing that I can conclude is a, as an absence of your meaningful response is that it is much like our, or perhaps your favorite politician, Nancy Pelosi, in regards to the Obamacare bill, that we can all read it after it passes. The second issue that I'd like to raise is, in the Bonner County code, there is some definition of business, and specifically, one of those items talks about items in which the board may bring to this meeting. There is no exclusionary items defined there, and I would ask you, Commissioner Omott, to explicitly define and provide some type of clear scope as to what business means, and I would ask to you to put that on a future agenda item, so that not just your fellow commissioners, but the general public can be made aware of exactly how you define that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Is there anybody else online?
Commissioner Omott, will you be requesting that on the next business meeting?
Is there anybody else online?
I'm going to ask for clarification, because part of what the ordinance says on public comment, it's for the people to bring forward something they want to see on the next agenda, and that is what Mr. Kramer has asked, so I'm asking, are you going to put it on the agenda, since he asked it specifically of you?
Commissioner Williams, I am unsure as to whether or not I will put it on the agenda, but as the board, any member of the board can put something on the agenda. Whether or not the board chooses to hear that item is up to the discretion of the board. Our next public speaker.
I still want to point a clarification, because his question is actually asking you to define it. So, if I put it, the reason I'm asking is, if I put it on the agenda, if you're not willing to provide the answer, then he doesn't get the result. So, I can put it on the agenda if you'd like, but he's asking you to define the word business for the business meeting, so.
Commissioner Williams, the, the, what we are currently in is actually public comment, and.
And he's asking for an agenda item, though. That's what public comment is, it's to.
Thank you, Commissioner, you are out of order. Mr. Hutchings, please continue.
No, we're not going to bypass this, sorry.
It's ten-thirty-eight, and this meeting is recessed until eleven AM.
Oh, come on. You are a coward. You are a coward. And the swerve, that's, you don't even, you don't even stand enough to stand up to.